Oh my god, that works. Am I like super loud? Am I okay talking like this at this tone?
Is this okay?
Okay. Oh, we sure are. Oh, good.
Is that good? Okay.
Not too loud. Not railing, but.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Bruno and on behalf of the Oldbridge PTA President's Council, I would like to welcome you to Candidates Night. Tonight, we will begin with a brief statement from each of the Board of Education candidates in the order they will appear on the ballot. There are seven candidates, there are six candidates running for three open seats with a three-year term. Each candidate will have two minutes to deliver their statement. The candidates are: Candidate number one, Brooke Richards Patterson.
Thank you. My name is Brooke Richards Patterson, I'm running for Oldbridge Board of Ed. I've been Oldbridge resident for thirteen years. I have two children, a daughter who recently graduated nursing school, having started in Oldbridge Schools, and a middle-schooler, he's been in the school system since kindergarten. For as long as I've been a parent, I've been very hands-on with my kids and feel I've been called to be part of something greater. We need to raise the bar. Before schools shut down, I never questioned the decisions made by the Board of Ed. I'm certain that's the case for a large base of parents with kids in the system. It's to where we don't get a say in our own children and what they're exposed to or how they are learning. We aren't being directly informed from curriculum to program cuts to budgeting setbacks. It's time to involve parents more in how we manage policies, budget, and education. We need more community involvement. We moved to Oldbridge for its educational rewards, it's what I hope to remain proud of. I have every child stakeholder and faculty member's best interests at heart. This may not be a paid job, but it's a serious job. I'd love to come together and work with one another, creating the most welcoming, efficient environment for our community. My values don't waver. If you have any questions, please feel free to speak to me, whether it's my social or here afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number two, Jennifer Dantuno.
Good evening. My name is Jen Dantuno. Sorry. My name's Jen Dantuno, I'm running for reelection for the school board. I was, I'm very proud to have been on the board the past three years. This year, I'm sitting as president of the Board of Ed. I am an Oldbridge alumni, I went to Voorhees, Salk, and I was a first freshman class of Oldbridge High School. I'm a very proud parent of a two-student junior in the high school and a fourth grader at Memorial. I am a self-diagnosed volunteer addict, I am always doing something to help others. Started, you know, with all the advocacy as PTA, I do things on the board at church, I went up to state level with the PTA and things like that. No is not really a word in my vocabulary, to me, there's always a way to get things done. So, I feel like there's still work to be done, so I would like to continue my work on the Board of Ed. And that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number three, Salvatore Giordano.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Salvatore Giordano and I'm running for reelection to the Oldbridge Board of Education. I'm candidate number three on the school board election ballot and I'm asking for your vote this election season. Out of all the candidates running, I have the most experience with the administration and school district. I've been on the board for two terms and experience matters a lot, as we will be selecting the next superintendent to run Oldbridge Schools, and they will need to be led by board members that know our district the best. It is also important to be honest and swift with responses from citizen emails, as I have throughout the years and I will continue to do so. This attention to the community is vital, given the significant changes we will be making from our strategic planning in the coming years. During my time on the board, I've served on the negotiations committee and participated in most committee meetings where most discussions and updates in the district occur. We have had to make very difficult decisions in the past year and I've handled them with logic and rationale, rather than submitting to fear and outside forces. As a former student of Oldbridge High School, I have a unique perspective of what programs make a student successful. It is important for me to continue to help students move on to the next phase of their lives. I've always been an advocate for dual enrollment courses at the high school, along with career and technical education classes. The biggest expense of a student's life is their education, and saving them as much time and money as possible is a goal we should be striving for in the school district every day. To conclude, I want to continue serving the people of Oldbridge and to be a good representative for you and all of the residents. Make sure you vote for me Salvatore Giordano for reelection to the Oldbridge Board of Education, number three on the ballot. You can vote by mail, vote early, starting October 25th and on Election Day, November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number five, Marjorie Jodrey.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, thank the Oldbridge PTA President's Council for hosting Candidates Night. And a little bit about me, I've been a proud resident of Oldbridge since nineteen ninety-eight. I am grateful for the opportunities the community has given my family. My daughter attended Oldbridge Public Schools, Grissom, Salk, and Oldbridge High School, where she benefited from the district's strong academic programs, and actually, she was in the TV studio right where you guys are, including the challenge program, honors and AP courses. Those experiences laid a foundation for her success, and today, she's a producer, editor, writer for, editor and writer for a major television network. She and her husband continue to call Oldbridge their home. Personally, I bring a wide range of former and current experience in public education. I started as a paraprofessional, I was a special education classroom teacher, and I was the first citywide, New York citywide autism instructional coach. I was an educational administrator in the autism, for the autism programs in New York City, and I'm a board-certified behavior analyst. I hold, I'm currently working in New York Cities as a BCBA and an educational consultant, and I hold a BA in education, an MS in special education, and a New York State Advanced Certification in Autism and Severe Disabilities from Pace University. I'm a board-certified behavior analyst. These roles have shaped how I approach my work in the Oldbridge Board of Education. I understand the system from multiple perspectives, and I always strive to ensure that every voice, whether parent, teacher, student, or staff member, is heard, valued, and respected. I value my relationships with my fellow board members, school staff, and the community. Oldbridge is more than where I live, it's my home and the community I care deeply about. It's been an honor to serve on the Board of Education, and it would be a privilege to continue that service through reelection.
Thank you. Candidate number seven, Angela Kuzo.
Good evening. I want to welcome my opponents, and I want to thank the members of the board, the OBEA, the teachers, and the PTA President's Council for hosting tonight. I have been a resident of Oldbridge for fifty-six years. I have been through the whole school system here. I went to Shepherd, I went to Salk, and I graduated from Madison Central. I'm not going to tell you what year, but that's the, that's, I did graduate. I did go to Rutgers. I also graduated from Brookdale. I have two associate's degrees, I have one in communications, and my other is in the art field. I am also currently a member of the Cultural Arts Committee in Oldbridge. I have four rescue dogs, which I'm very proud of, so I do work with local rescues. I work with a lot of disabled pets also. I try to find homes in my spare time. I am also a softball player for the Oldbridge Recreation Department. So, I don't know where I find the time between that and my current job, and I've been there eleven years, I am a safety supervisor at UPS. I work, my main branch is the Bayonne Hub, which is a brand-new building. Right now, currently, I'm teaching driver training in the Meadowlands Hub. I've been doing this for eleven years, and I'm very proud of where I've come and how far I've come in this company, because I've started as a preloader. And like I said, I have a lot to offer. My ex's children have, were also raised and have been through this whole school system. One thing we did instill in the children, which was most importantly, education, that our fine teachers provided, to myself and of course, continue to provide to the children of Oldbridge now and in the near future. I am very, very proud that I have been through the school system, and I think Oldbridge has a lot to offer. And I believe that we need to strengthen the academic programs, we need to strengthen parent-teacher relations, I think we need it all to come together, and we need to hear each other's voice as a whole, and we need to be united. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move into the question and answer portion of the evening. The questions were submitted by email to the, from Oldbridge residents and taxpayers. Due to the volume of submissions, not all questions will be asked. These questions were reviewed by a committee and shared with the candidates in advance so they could prepare for tonight. Each candidate will have ninety seconds to respond to each question. A few important reminders for tonight. When your time is up, you must immediately conclude your response. Time limits will be strictly enforced to ensure fairness. Candidates may not concede their time to another candidate. Candidates may not address comments directly to other candidates. Audience members may not address the candidates during the event. We reserve the right to remove any candidate or audience member who is disrespectful to our volunteers or who cannot abide by these rules. Brooke, you're going to go first. What motivated you to run for the Board of Education?
Thank you. My children are my biggest motivation, they've taught me as much as I've taught them. Over the past five years, I've watched district families feel left out of major decisions from administrative changes to budget cuts, and that inspired me to step up. I've watched Board of Ed members not be respectful to one another and feel we deserve better. I've heard from parents and faculty who feel silenced or afraid to speak up, and that's not the culture I want for our schools. My older child has graduated, and my younger one gives me the time and drive to get more involved. I've already volunteered and advocated at every level I can, but now, I want to make decisions that truly serve all families openly and fairly from the other side of the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Good evening. I started three years ago to run for Board of Education because I was asked. A community member had asked me when there was a vacancy, "Hey Jen, we think you'd be a good idea if you ran for the Board of Ed." So, joking with a friend, I'm like, "Can you believe what this person said?" And they're like, "No, really, we think you'd be good at it." So, I ran three years ago because the community asked me to. That was a big thing. They saw the advocacy work that I was doing at the PTA level for the school and at district level for the PTA, and they saw that I was advocating for the right things to be done for the children. And then I have a reputation through all the, my volunteer work, to, for commitment to a position that I have and to follow through with any plans. So, because of that and the work that I've seen we've been able to do the last three years, I'd like to rerun. Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, so when I first ran, I took advantage of the college-level courses at the high school, and that's always something I've always been passionate about, trying to keep the momentum going for the last six years. We've actually had a few students that got their associate's degree, that graduated from Oldbridge High School. And when I was doing it, I had to do it on my own, so I'm glad that I was able to bring that up to the administration, and that's my goal, is to keep it moving forward. And I have a master's degree in accounting, so I've always enjoyed finance and budgets. And as the years have gone on, a lot of different things have been happening, I've been tested with a lot of new challenges that have come out from the state and also locally, so I feel like I'm the best positioned. I've handled things logically, and I've always tried to be the best representative possible for the community. I am always able to be reached out to if anyone has any questions. And even though I've had to make difficult decisions, you know, for both sides, I feel like I'm respected by the community, and I give them that respect back, and that's why I continue to run and why I'm so involved in running for these elections. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Similar to Jen, when I, somebody reached out to me, it was a teacher in one of the schools, and she asked me if I would be interested in running for the Board of Ed, and I really wasn't sure, and coming from New York City school system, I really, you know, didn't have a lot of experience here, even though I lived here for twenty-nine years. But it, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the Board of Education in Oldbridge and supporting students and the community. I'm running for reelection to the Oldbridge Board of Education because I believe in strong public school education system, and I think it's the cornerstone of a successful community. I've supported policies and initiatives that focus on student achievement, student safety, classroom resources, and equity in our schools during the last few years. I would like to have the opportunity to continue to unite people, to develop workable solutions which will enhance our district and provide more opportunities for every child. I believe that, especially now, Oldbridge Board of Education needs experienced collaborative leadership, because we face ongoing budget challenges and increasing student enrollment, and the need to support academic and emotional well-being, as well as to find ways to mitigate the budget challenges. My twenty-nine years of teaching experience has given me a thorough understanding of what students and teachers need to succeed. I remain receptive to continuing to learn about specific needs of Oldbridge. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and I'm ready to serve the students, families, and staff of Oldbridge with dedicated and purpose. I'm always available to meet with parents and students and teachers.
Thank you. Angela?
As a lifelong resident of Oldbridge and having been through the school system, I feel that the test scores of the students need to be improved. For example, based on the state test scores from NISH, proficiency is reading forty-nine percent. Test scores in math is thirty-six percent. I feel that if I get elected, I will work with administration, teachers, and all of shareholders in the town, so that the Board of Education can assist in raising the scores. I believe in teamwork. I believe in unity and solutions between the parents, the teachers, the Board of Ed, coming together as a whole, including the students, and listening and hearing every single side of everybody's concerns. I think that is the most important thing about being part of a team and being part of the Board of Education, that you are there to help the community. And we need to make sure that our children are getting the best education possible in the town of Oldbridge.
Thank you. Question two. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our district in the next three to five years? Jennifer?
Thank you. I think the biggest district we face, not only is it a school district, but as a community, is the diversity that's in town. And it's not the diversity of culture, but the diversity of polarity of one side against the other. We all represent the same people, we're all one community, we should be working together. And I think the separate polarity is something that's really tearing us apart and making things harder and making our work go more uphill than, you know, even. The finances is the obvious one, it's unknown, you know, the state said when we were in S2 District, we'd lose funding for seven years, and then, you know, this past year, we were supposed to be level, and we still lost three percent. So, because we're not, we don't know what the formula is, and, you know, things keep changing, you know, the biggest part of what we're not going to know over the next three to five years is where's our finance, finance is going to be, so that's a continued conversation. And then the growing demographic, you know, you can look in any area of the forty-two miles of Oldbridge, and there are new houses and new developments and new communities popping up, and more on the plans that were put in place twenty years ago. So, the growing parts of the town, as that grows, is going to be our other biggest challenge, you know, where do we redistrict and how do we fit everything back in the school? Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, so we have to continue to address the state aid cuts by the state, and unfortunately, the options of high property tax increases. Like I've said, the board had to make a difficult decision, and I've used the most utilitarian approach to basically do the best for all of the residents and all of the stakeholders in the community. We also have a, not a problem, but we also have to plan for redistricting of our schools, and we're having a meeting October fifteenth, I hope you all could come, give your input, which is another problem we have, there's not a lot of committee input, especially at board meetings, committee meetings, for example, a lot of information goes out during those meetings and not a lot of people show up, so when we vote on very important items, it could look like we rushed into things or things weren't handled in the best manner. And we're also going to have a new superintendent coming in this year, so, like I said before, as being someone that's been on the board the longest, I feel like I'd be best to lead the district with this new superintendent that comes in, and those are the top three problems. Thank you.
The question is, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing our district in the next three to five years? Mairee?
First and foremost, definitely is a severe budget deficit and state funding cuts that Oldbridge is facing with a thirty-million-something budget deficit. So largely due to ongoing state reductions under the S2 formula, we have persisted for about seven years, and last year, BOE had to actually look at half-day high school, eliminating kindergarten, and cutting middle-school sports. Now, the formula doesn't consider resident income, it also factors in the overall value of our town. So including land development, not just the homes. So as Oldbridge continues to grow, the valuation has led to reduced state aid for us, under the assumption that the town can self-fund itself. So part of the solution is going to be for the town and BOE to work together, to ensure our schools and town survive by accounting for financial revenue from land developments and overdue forty-year town assessment. Because even if you cut summer school for twenty-four K and literally cut everybody from administration, that's still like four million dollars. We have twenty-six million dollars to recoup. Next, we also have rising operational costs, which includes transportation, healthcare utilities, and other essential schools. So those becoming more expensive, us having a limited revenue, it's an imbalance putting pressure when it comes to our programs and staffing. Might be a good time to explore learn-term contracts, which will help stabilize costs because new vendors come with new headaches. We're also going to be facing an enrollment growth and infrastructure need in Oldbridge, because with all the ongoing development, we're going to have increased student enrollment, potentially requiring new schools or expansions, which is going to require significant capital investments and long-term planning. So I'm hoping with the BOE's current project of consolidation and redistricting, we'll be in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marjorie?
Okay, in an effort not to repeat a lot of what everybody else said, but yeah, it's the budget, the budget, the budget. That's our biggest problem, it's our biggest problem with most everything from, from programs and taxes and schools, but we, as a board, we hired a demographic, a firm to do a demographic study, and we're hoping that this, this... hoping that this, this, this firm will help us determine whether we should do things like redistricting, redistricting, or we need new facilities, or we need to combine things, or combine programs, or services, or things like that, so we could, we could better maximize our, our budget. Also, the upcoming state government elections, that's going to also play a role because as of now, we have not been able to find out what the funding formula exactly is, as Maire mentioned. We don't know exactly what goes into it, so how do we work with it? In addition, another pressing issue that is coming up is addressing the transition from Dr. Bregan's interim superintendency to finding a full-time, a full-time superintendent, and then to identify somebody to be hired and installed in 2026. I've taken an active and vocal role in helping guide the selection of the interim administration toward continued policies of inclusion, safety, and academic support. What else? We have to also talk about long-term strategies.
Thank you.
Sorry. I have so much more to say.
Angela?
Our biggest challenges are the budget cuts, again, and the administration and the Board of Education must work together to be more fiscally responsible as to not overburden the taxpayers who are currently overburdened with taxes, such as the recent increase. We have to be better prepared and anticipate state aid cuts. We should be focusing on all grants available, state and nationwide. Surefalls are not being addressed properly. We need to go through all job descriptions, eliminate redundancies. For example, three people being paid to do the same job. I want to try to work together with everyone and come together as a community altogether because we are doing this for the students, and they are the future of our community.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. Biggest challenges facing our district? We're facing growing pains, leadership transition, rising costs, and a need for stability. Without a full-time superintendent set in place yet, teachers and families want to feel included again. Fiscal pressures are real, but so is the need for transparency. I'd like to see a forensic audit of past spending and a shared financial tracker for the board, so every member can make informed decisions without starting from scratch. Each year, new members come in. Cuts may come, but collaboration will soften the impact. Long-term planning can't wait. We need it now, built on trust and data. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. How do you plan to support academic growth and student achievement for all learners? Salvatore?
Yes, so especially at the high school, we have a great staff that teach a variety of courses. The trade options we have at the high school are comparable to some of the very high-performing vocational schools in the state. We, we actually discussed at our last curriculum meeting, we're going to be introducing AI for teachers and students, which will prepare them for the 21st century advances of learning. And as I've said, for those that aren't college-bound, that aren't taking the dual enrollment courses, we have those trades. And like, I know a bunch of people that took, you know, the accounting courses, woodworking, auto shop, and they've gone on to places like Lincoln Tech, and they've gotten certified working as diesel mechanics and very successful careers. And especially nowadays, you're seeing the increase in what they call blue-collar jobs compared to white-collar jobs. So that's definitely something we have to keep in mind and have an option there for our students because everyone's going to have their own path, and we have to make sure that we provide the opportunity for every student to succeed in their careers or their educational paths.
Thank you. Maire?
I believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, regardless of their background, ability, or their learning style. My plan focuses on innovation and accountability to ensure academic growth and achievement for all. So first, I would advocate for strengthening and modernizing our current curriculum so that we'd be up to date, because I think students should be prepared not just for tests, but also for life. Second, I would push for personalized learning instruction for diverse needs, the champion multi-tier support systems, and the differentiated instructions, so every learner, whether they're gifted, struggling, or special needs, gets what they need to succeed, and instead we meet the students where they are. Third, I would invest in teacher development, promoting coaching and feedback models that would help our educators grow, adapt, and stay responsive to our everyday student needs. Fourth, I would foster a culture of support, safety, and belonging, and a positive climate for encouraging student voice, family engagement, and our community. This way, we'll champion data-driven decision-making when it comes to us selecting our solutions. And finally, I would support programs that build life skills, resilience, which includes critical thinking and world-wide life problems solving, so that students would be eligible to get assistance for whether it's college, careers, or just career lives. And I think by building the district this way, we're being responsive to every diverse student needs in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
First of all, I want to say that I think we have just excellent teachers in the district, and I think we have really good programs for academic programs, college-bound students, and also students that want to pursue the trades. I think that supporting academic growth and student achievement begins with maintaining high expectations for all students. I think they need to have access to the tools they need to support them in order to meet their needs, and that includes supporting evidence-based instruction, investing in professional development for teachers, and using data to identify and address learning gaps early. I also believe in strengthening partnerships among families, educators, and the community so that every child, regardless of background or ability, has the opportunity to thrive.
Thank you. Angela?
We need to support every student with positive reinforcement, consequences for those who bully, intimidate, and harass HIB. Every student has a right to the same education regardless of ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, special needs, with no exceptions. And with the aid of AI, where we should be using AI as a tool for learning and proper training on how to use AI by all parties involved. And that means the whole community needs to get involved and make sure the students have everything that they could possibly need and how to use AI correctly.
Thank you. Brooke?
Every student deserves a fair chance to succeed. That means supporting advanced learners and students with special needs equally. I've heard families say communication with case managers can be difficult, and I want to work with administration to improve on that, also assessing if case managers need additional support. Another thought was, I appreciate that our middle school principal, Mr. Dolan at Sandberg, used the Rutgers testing to identify and close learning gaps. I'd love to see that expanded district-wide. The earlier we intervene, the better habits and confidence our students build. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So to support academic growth, I'd start by listening to the students. I loved what we did last year where we had the student town hall. I'd love to grow that into having more communication and maybe a parent town hall. Some of that can be done through the committee meetings and things like that, where we can have feedback from the parents. But when the kids gave feedback through the student town hall, it was amazing because the kids know what they need or ideas that they have. We are, as a board, kept in the loop as far as test scores, student involvement, you know, what are the, the kids' numbers in clubs and sports, and the student activity participation. I'd love to maintain our model intervention and tiered support program, you know, other districts come and look at what we do. With that, we meet so many of our learners where they are. I'd love and want to maintain the diverse course offering that we have. You know, again, like many of my co-runners, I guess, said, you know, we have, you know, the trades, you have the high-achieving classes, and you have the special needs classes. That's what makes Old Bridge great. That's what makes people attracted to Old Bridge. So maintaining that. I also think we need to support paras being district employees because they know our students as their support person, and they know what's going on in the school. So it's a more familiar situation for our special needs learners that might need, you know, that extra support in the school. The character ed interviews that we had, every student said that they had a reason to come to school.
Thank you.
So just maintaining that. Thank you.
Question four. How will you balance fiscal responsibility with maintaining high-quality programs? Maire?
I understand that fiscal responsibility and education excellence go hand-in-hand. I'm committed to making smart, transparent financial decisions that protect our student opportunities. I would advocate for clear budgeting, planning, regular audits, and cost-saving measures that don't compromise our student services. This includes reviewing light items for efficiency and ensuring funds are directed to programs that deliver real value for us. To offset reductions in state aid, I'd ask, like others, the grants, the partnerships, the community-driven initiatives, so we can maintain programs like mental health support core programs and vocational training without overburdening the taxpayers. Every dollar should support student growth, wellness, and achievement. I'll also champion transparency and community engagement. Family and educators deserve to be part of the budget conversations, and I'll work to restore trust between the board and the public. Families will feel heard, and educators will feel supported. I also support long-term planning and strategic planning. That accounts for rising operational costs that we're going to have, the enrollment growth, and the infracture, infrastructure needs that are needed. This includes working with the town to ensure sustainable solutions that help our town as well as our school. Finally, I would protect what matters most. I believe in protecting core programs, our special education services, our full-day kindergarten, our academics, vocational, athletics, and our support services, while funding, while finding savings like in non-instructural areas. Every decision I make will be guided by the principle that we're putting students first and we're serving Old Bridge community. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Balancing fiscal responsibility with maintaining high-quality programs starts with transparency, data-driven decision-making, and collaboration. I can believe, I believe we can be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars without compromising educational excellence. This means closely reviewing existing programs to ensure they're effective, sustainable, and identifying opportunities to share or combine resources between schools, and using the demographic and enrollment data to guide long-term planning. We've already discussed starting frequent meetings with our finance committee and long-range planning committee. We're going to have frequent meetings with them so that we can, we can, we can go through everything, all our programs and all our initiatives, and see what can be combined and what we can, we can change also based on the demographic study that we are awaiting. I will continue to advocate for a fair state funding formula and explore innovative approaches that allow us to provide strong academic, extracurricular, and enrichment opportunities for all students, even in a challenging fiscal environment. Ultimately, responsible budgeting isn't just about cutting costs, it's about making strategic investments that support students today while safeguarding our district's future.
Thank you. Angela?
I believe we need to file for grants, and that if we received, it will ease the stress on the budget. For example, go through all the job descriptions, eliminating redundancies, hold people accountable for curriculum, low test scores, and the budget. We all need to work together, and I mean that as a community, with the teachers, the Board of Education, everyone involved, so that everyone has a fair voice and a fair say in anything that is decided. I believe in also holding meetings and groups to where we can hear everyone out and hear what their ideas are as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. My approach to budgeting is simple. Education comes first, but accountability matters. With tax increases, families deserve transparency and smart spending. I'd like to analyze every grant vendor and software contract regularly to ensure value. We are currently working at preserving our clubs by offering Wednesday late buses, which means slightly rescinding necessary budget cuts for busing made a year ago. With this recent giant tax hike, we should be responsible with spending and budgeting. We should revisit the notes taken from the community stakeholders about busing alternatives and keep a pay-to-pay option as a backup to any possibility of losing middle school or high school sports. I'm not willing to remove kindergarten nor ROTC. I do not believe they should even be considered non-b mandatory. I want to visit each grant expiration date and cost before agreeing to said grants. I want to break down each software program and vendor cost and assess on a recurring basis if we need to shop around for more practical costs. I love the idea of one of our middle school planetariums being reopened for public use to generate income. I have also recommended bringing back night school to be put on the students this time, not the district, also in hopes to generate income and also offer faculty members more opportunity. I've suggested promoting ad purchases at Lombardi Field and sat with our business administrator to discuss fundraising. I also want creative revenue ideas, reopening the planetarium for community events, offering student-led night programs, or exploring partnerships. We can be responsible and resourceful. Fiscal discipline funds strong programs. They're not in competition, they depend on one another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So the latest tax bump was a hard pill for everyone to swallow, but it should have bumped our baseline quite substantially. And so as long as costs don't grow exponentially, we should be in a good place to avoid any drastic cuts. We've discussed drastic cuts in the past because we had options on the table that prevented us from doing so. And to maintain transparency with the community on why the board was voting the way we were to go above and beyond the two allotted, 2% allotted by law. If we do have to make adjustments to programs, I'd like to make the adjustments before cutting programs outright, figuring out what options do we have. My role as a board member is not to vote on my personal beliefs and feelings, but I involve the community in a big way. Let's have everyone at the table and have one big conversation. The budget has been weeded through for the past seven-plus years, and the current board has spent hours going line-by-line. There's nothing left to cut. If we have to make big financial decisions, it's not the board's decision, it's the community's decision. Where do we go? So, again, continuing the state advocacy, we do have an employee on staff that their job is to go through the grants and, and apply for all of that. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, similar to the 2025 budget season and the budget seasons before that, I'd be transparent with the community and listen to and read the preferences of the residents. I would also make sure the town continues its strategic plan through redistricting and being more efficient with facilities and resources. These changes can save us millions per year, and the reason we need to do this is because of the building in the town and the changing resident demographics. And we're going to have to send these students into different schools and make them more efficient. And as, if many of you haven't known, since 2018, we've had to combat state aid cuts. So, and these total decreases have been over $20 million. So as this S2 ends this year, in the next year, we'll have to deal with a new state legislator, a new governor. And another thing we have to consider is that most of the budget is the staff and the programs. So minor changes to, some minor changes to facilities may not make the impact residents are expecting, but through this redistricting plan, we'll be able to make a bigger impact on expenses that have to deal with buildings and grounds, transportation, and things of that sort. So that's what we'll be working on next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Question five. What role should the BOE play in ensuring student safety and well-being? Marjorie?
Okay, so when I read this, this question, I realized it was centering around the role that the BOE should play. And the role of the BOE is not to be involved in the day-to-day administering to the schools, but to work with the, hire the superintendent, work with the superintendent and his or her designees to, to implement programs and, and day-to-day activities. That being said, the superintendent not only ensures academic and education enrichment of the students, but also their safety from outside influences like threats or bullying. So as a board, we, we work with, we collaboratively work with the superintendent and the designees, and we, and we make sure that those things are implemented. We work with the superintendent to support the implementation of things like tech security initiatives. We review HIB reports and ensure bullying is handled according to, according to policy and state law. We support guidance counselors, professional development. We support implementation of mental health initiatives and collaboration between Old Bridge schools and outside providers, for example, our partnership with ESS. We also support the superintendent in the physical security of the buildings. We support the superintendent with the continued maintenance and relationship with local law enforcement. We also support our superintendent in working with other districts to identify trends in security.
Thank you.
I had one more.
We need to create a school safety committee that will establish and maintain standard We need to create a school safety committee that will establish and maintain standards at every school in the district by using best practices that each school uses and create one uniform policy that every school addresses to. And as I am a safety supervisor for, as I said, an international logistics company, I believe that I can help implement this policy. We need to think of the student's safety first among everything else, and also, obviously, their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. The board's responsibility for safety goes beyond approving HIB reports. It's about staying connected, reviewing state recommendations, working closely with counselors and administrators, and ensuring our policies reflect the realities students face. Every child deserves to feel safe, supported, and protected physically, emotionally, and socially. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I'm going to echo what Marjorie just said. With the role of the BOE, our job as BOE is to hire and stay in tune with the superintendent. That's our one employee. We do decide on curriculum and policy within the district. That's the other role of the BOE. We can only ensure that we have policies in place, that the superintendent has the proper employees such as security guards at every school, continued relationships, that the superintendent has continued relationships with the police department, that their working relationship with other districts on trends, and have policies in place to allow safety protocols are taking place. The Board of Ed can help with the creating or implementation of curriculum around AI safety, internet safety. Our health curriculum teaches about personal safety, drugs and alcohol safety, and then the HIB reports is the other part of the BOE role, is we read those and make sure that they're being followed and adhered to in a timely manner.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, so safety is a top priority. In fact, when we went to the workshops in Atlantic City, they had a detective and a superintendent showing a program about equipment and services, and we've already had them in Olbridge, so that's something we've always been ahead of the curve on. When it comes to students' mental health, we also have a lot of resources for them that may have not been available for other students in past generations or past years. And so, safety physically and safety of the mind is very important for students to get the best education possible and be able to focus without worrying about outside things. And as you've seen recently with the places that our students have been going, I think it's a credit to the security they feel coming to our schools and the confidence they have in their staff, their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mairei?
I believe the BOE plays a critical role in ensuring our schools are safe, inclusive, and supportive for all our students, for the well-being and to be central with the decision. So, while administrators and staff manage daily operations, the BOE sets division policies and accountability structures that shape how safety, mental health, and equity are prioritized across throughout our district. So, they're responsible for fostering a culture of care, responsiveness, and alignment with our OB's community values. The OB must align clear policies that address physical safety, mental health, bullying prevention, and emergency preparedness, which they regularly review and align with state and federal guidelines. But policies aren't just enough. The board must ensure that whole-child policy initiatives support our students, whether social, emotional, behavioral health, which can ensure access to counselors, wellness programs, peer support networks, or safe learning environments for all of our students. Transparency is going to matter for us. We must create a meaningful opportunity for families, educators, and students to share their concerns and their thoughts. So, whether it's through forums, town halls, or surveys, or advisory committees, their voices should help give our decision and reflect the lived experience that we have in our OB community. We also need to prioritize safety in our budgets. So, that does include the mental health services, our security infrastructure, and our staff training, without compromising our education quality. By modeling accountability and care, the BOE helps make these values throughout our district. Finally, board members should embody the values we expect from our schools. We should be respectful, have dialogue, ongoing learning, and a commitment to systems that protect and uplift every learner.
Thank you. Question six. How would you foster collaboration between the Board of Education, administration, teachers, parents, and students? Angela?
I believe and feel that we should create liaisons between the Board of Education, the council, administration, teachers, students, and parent representatives. Create a committee of all representatives of all groups to discuss issues so that the Board of Education can have a better relationship with all parties involved. For example, quarterly town hall meeting involving Board of Education members, administration, mayor, and council, police department, teachers, and administration, so that the public can voice their concerns, and what we, as a board, can do to address the issues and come up with solutions for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. Great question. I believe collaboration has to be intentional. I won't wait years to start conversations with teachers, admin, parents, special services groups, and students. I've already been a shoulder and ear and want to explore this more. I've already begun speaking to parents, teachers, and admin to understand where the communication breaks down. It was then I learned about the Behavioral Steering Committee. I expect much more. I cannot begin to express the genuine concerns I hear from both parents and parents that they do not feel seen, heard, nor respected on several counts, and are equally afraid of retaliation if they speak up about it. This is a priority of mine to minimize and bring attention to immediately, not after incident escalates. I'd like to see consistent newsletters, family academy nights, and open meetings that invite honest feedback from faculty members and families. I've expressed this to our interim superintendent, and he's already started tackling both the newsletter and scheduled a family academy night. Let's keep this going. Our community has grown divided, often through social media misunderstandings. The more we bring families and faculty together face-to-face, the stronger and kinder our district becomes modeling best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Sorry, I keep pushing this table. Sorry, Brooke. So, I've been fortunate enough to work with the OBEA and attend two management collaborative conventions, which touch upon the teacher, admin, and Board of Ed working together. It was nice to hear that many of the suggestions the Board of Ed and Olbridge and the district already do. There's always more improvement that we can make. And regular discussion meetings, open communication, common mission and goals is one thing that Olbridge does have. All groups have been and can be part of the conversation at the committee meetings. The board, the past several years, has strongly encouraged the public to come to the meetings because that's where everyone comes to one table, and we all start sharing in the discussion. So, I would continue to focus on the committee meetings and making those meetings more productive and meaningful with having meaningful discussion with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, so parents make up most of the stakeholders in the community, and their students are impacted directly by the decisions we make. So personally, when I get emails from them, I consider whether they're a parent, have a student, what grade are they in, what impacts them the most. They are the first concern of a Board of Education member. Educators provide institutional support and insight that helps the board and administration make informed decisions. So, they are also a valued voice. We have a lot of communication with the teachers. They provide us a list of things every year. We just went through negotiations. So, me personally, I was on the committee. I was able to hear a lot about what they needed, what their goals were going forward for the next few years. So, both of those types of stakeholders have to be used together to shape the direction of schools. We also have a lot of surveys that go out from many initiatives, so we get a lot of input from parents and students. And of course, we listen to them and make the best decisions for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mairei?
As a lifelong resident, a parent, an employee, and advocate, I've always seen the powerful collaboration when everybody comes to the table, not just to listen, but to also participate. In order to be truly effective in cross-collaboration, everyone needs a seat at that table. If elected to BOE, I would prioritize open communication, respectful dialogue, and collaborative problem-solving across all levels of our school district. I believe BOE should actively create structured opportunities for engagement, like parent advisory committees, community, student town halls, and forums, and educator roundtables. We should also consider perhaps having a student from each of the 15 schools come to the BOE meetings, how we have similar to now with the current president of the high school. Their voices matter, and their perspectives can help shape the decisions that directly affect their actual learning environment. To ensure transparency and accessibility, any of these discussions that we have should be summarized and put to the administration's site so that those who can't attend meetings are able to view them on their own time. I also suggested before a tool like a BOE suggestion box, where it's secure, accessible, and anonymous, so that this way educators, parents, anybody from the community, and students can share ideas and concerns without fear or hesitation. I think collaboration means transparency, and we have to work to ensure that decisions are made from input from all our key stakeholders and those directly that are impacted. So, whether it's through the surveys, parents, student surveys together, advisory groups, or simply just sitting down together to talk, everyone's voice matters. And I think our schools are the heart and vitality of Olbridge, so that we need to be a one unity front when it comes to helping our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
I think collaboration starts with mutual communication and respect. I believe the Board of Education, administration, teachers, parents, and students all share the same goal. We want to help every child succeed. We are continuing to encourage and invite all stakeholders to attend our committee meetings. As Jen said, we talk about so many things there, and oftentimes, we hash through differences of opinions and different viewpoints there. By the time we get to a regular board meeting, we've already come to a mutual agreement or understanding. We encourage people to come to board meetings. We have presented surveys to parents and students, and also staff members to gather additional information. And when we listen to understand and work together, we make better, more informed decisions for our schools. As a board member, I'll promote open dialogue, transparency in decision-making, and opportunities for all voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Question seven. What experience or skills do you bring that will strengthen the Board of Education? Brooke?
Thank you. While I don't think how long you live here warrants your experience, it doesn't hurt either. I've become very involved, scheduled meetings with our business administrator, met with our interim superintendent, attended committee meetings, town council meetings, gone to Trenton twice this year alone, and educated myself on policy and needs every spare chance I get. I have managed teams, systems, and outcomes in healthcare, an industry that demands accountability, compliance, and compassion. Those same skills translate directly into educational governance. Board of Ed is not just about policy, it's about budgets, oversight, and ensuring resources truly serve students. I already advocate for those depending on public service. I understand how to mobilize and inspire support from fundraising, driving engagement, and building consensus around a mission. I don't just bring technical skill, I bring heart. I understand what it takes to balance family realities with institutional decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
My big focus this year on the board has been one of one discussion group, not multiple. I don't want to be a district where one hand doesn't talk to the other. In January, this board had a strong start of collaboration as our goal, understanding the budget more, and really looking to where we are as a district. This year was the most meeting hours discussed for the budget so that the board can better understand the ins and outs of the finances going on in the district. The board has carried that over to the long-range strategic planning meeting, meetings that now are regularly scheduled for the future of the district, not just to be reactive to the news and changes. I've created a strong network with local PTAs, regional, and state level, and the skills I bring to the table are talking to people and being able to explain and translate things into general conversation, making examples that people can comfortably grasp. One of my biggest things that I have with me is the support of my family. And I'm going to give a shout out to my daughter who's spending her birthday here. So, if that doesn't scream support for my family, then yeah, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy birthday. Salvatore?
Yes, so the experience I bring is I've been working as a senior tax associate, and not only that, but I've been to courses hosted by the New Jersey Association of School Board Officials in Trenton. And a lot of people, there's a lot of different accounting standards that have to do with working as a school business administrator. So, learning that knowledge, I also took labor relation courses, if you want to verify what I took. And it's very important to understand the role of how finances work in the district and how different it is from, let's say, a private company or even a nonprofit. Like, the school accounting is very important to understand. And being on the board for six years and having two school board administrators basically teaching me and me asking a lot of questions, that's very important to have, to know how the finances work before going in, so there's not a big learning curve about that. And also, in terms of decision-making, as I said earlier, I use logic instead of reactionary, and I refuse to submit to partisan pressures, which is also a topic that many residents have talked about. And I'm as independent as they come when it comes to making decisions. I can't be bought, and I can't be influenced to make any decisions, one way or another. I listen to the needs of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mairei?
As a lifelong resident of Olbridge for more than 45 years, I do bring a unique advantage. It's a deep understanding of our town's financial history and how the past decisions continue to impact our schools today. So, I follow the school funding formula closely and understand how our last municipal assessment in 1978, which gave us a state-assigned value in 1990 of $3.7 billion. You combine that with rapid development of land, increased resident population, and increased property values in 2025, and we should be $12 billion. But this has not been accurately reflected in the state calculations or by the town. So, this disconnect is directly affecting our school budget and contributing to funding shortfalls. Because of this, I have practical ideas to help address budget cuts and rising taxes, solutions that are rooted both in experience and accountability. I bring over 25 years of professional budget experience, maintaining quality and integrity. Besides being a lifelong resident, alumni of all our schools, and a mother of three, I have a deep personal stake in the process for our district. It's not just professional, it is a personal and generational. I'm more than what others say of not being a girl's girl. I am that neighborhood friend. I am that mama bear, that when you need a hand anytime, first one there. When you need a voice for your child or you as a parent, I'm that person. I've spent nearly 17 years dealing in the schools. I've advocated for students, educators, and families, and I've worked to ensure that our schools remain inclusive, safe, and well-resourced. I understand how to listen, collaborate, and lead both with heart and practicality, and I'm hoping to bring that to the board as an independent voice that reflects the values and needs of our township. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Okay, so I'm just going to kind of reiterate what I said in the beginning, that I've held multiple different roles that I believe helped me in my role as a Board of Education member. I've been a paraprofessional, a special education classroom teacher, an autism instructional coach, an administrator, and I'm a board-certified behavior analyst. I am still currently working in New York City schools as a behavior analyst and also an education behavior consultant. I think that these roles shape how I look at things. I believe in collaboration between everyone, the community, students, staff, schools. I've served on multiple committees, and I attend every possible committee meeting that I can make, which is almost every one. Curriculum committee, finance, long-range planning, special education. I'm also a certified new board member by the New Jersey School Board Association, and I welcome all invitations to schools. I've been in, I've spent many hours and many days in classrooms for celebrations and programs and invitations to visit programs and look at different things that are in the schools, and I'm committed to ensuring that every voice is heard in schools.
Thank you. Angela?
Through my occupation, being a safety supervisor and being as I am a current member of the Olbridge Township Culture Arts Committee, we have had some very, very good community get-togethers this year. We did a comedy night. We just did a jazz arts festival over at Cottrell Farm Park. I believe that we have all worked hard for this community, which we are striving to bring the community together. That includes everyone in the community, parents, teachers, everyone. I also believe that, you know, being as I'm also a safety supervisor, the Culture Arts Committee, we both have budgets that must be kept and adhered to. My communication skills are advanced. As I meet with upper management, my colleagues, and employees that I am responsible for in order to meet budgetary restrictions and term cohesiveness. Also, my radio experience of 17 years can only strengthen the communication between all stakeholders. I will always listen to all sides to address concerns and come up with solutions. My heart and soul is in this town and in the community and in the students that go to these schools and in the Board of Education, including the students and everyone else involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Question eight. How should the district approach equity and inclusion to ensure all students feel representative and supported? Jennifer?
I'd love to see the district partner with the town and celebrate our diverse community. The school calendar is often a topic of culture inequity, when in fact, all cultures are considered the state-mandated dates. the state-mandated dates, the weather, and staff contracts. I'd like to focus and celebrate and educate each other about the holidays that each culture celebrates. This past year, the district did a Rooted in Culture for the high school and the peer leaders and student council at the lower elementary and middle schools. I'd like to grow upon that, because I think that was a great program that we could really fly with. I'd like to do similar with a different abilities and diagnosis. Educate and celebrate the diversity that Old Bridge has, working with the township to bring more people into the community. We could do more than just Spirit Day colors in the school to acknowledge different days. Let's educate the students of what the different days are for and what they're about. Bring more acknowledgement to the different days, it can be part of the morning announcements, you know, why today is honoring a special day. So I think that's a way we could do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yeah, so I was also at that Rooted in Culture event, and I graduated in two thousand eighteen, and in the few short years that have passed, a lot more country and nationality clubs have come about, so people, they're open, and they feel comfortable with sharing their nationality, their traditions, and their heritage. Thanks to advocacy groups like SEPTA, CPAG, we've had more classrooms created for our special education students, providing them with opportunities that they never would have had if the community didn't step up and come together to make that possible. So I feel like those two aspects of student life have really evolved, and we're trying to continue to do that. And I've always been open to anyone's opinion and anyone's heritage and culture. Actually, people bring that up more than you'd expect when they email me, because its values and heritage are very related to how their perspectives of learning are, so that's just something I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mairei?
I believe every student deserves to feel seen, heard, and supported. Equity and inclusion aren't just the buzzwords. They are the foundation of a school system that works for everyone and a foundation that I had when I grew up here on Old Bridge. Our district must take a proactive approach to ensure that all students, regardless of race, ability, background, ways of learning, economic status, or identity, have access to high-quality education and feel a true sense of belonging. That means reviewing policies through an equity lens, expanding inclusive practices, ensuring that it correctly reflects the diversity of our community, the diversity of our needs of our students and our educators. We must also strengthen support systems for students with disability by honoring the principle of LRE, least restrictive environment, and ensuring that every child receives the services they need and we meet the student where they are. As mentioned before, I'll advocate for the open forums, advisory groups, and student-led initiatives that gives a voice and seat at the table to speak and be heard. Whether through surveys or simply sitting down together to talk, we must listen and act with empathy for every student, educator, and family. Equity means removing the barriers to education, and inclusion means celebrating the differences and the learning styles and the academic needs. Together, they can create schools where our students can succeed, not just academically, but socially and emotionally. That's the future I want for Old Bridge, that's the future I grew up in, and that's the future that Old Bridge deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Well, I too got to attend Rooted in Culture. It was awesome. We got to learn about different groups of students' culture, that we learned about different foods, we learned about different traditions, we even, they tried to make us dance, but that wasn't really successful. But it was really, it was awesome, and I think the students really loved sharing their different cultures and backgrounds, and we loved being there. Also, as Sal mentioned, SEPTA and CPAG, they're just pillars of our community, and they assure that all students feel represented and supported. I believe in building and maintaining school environments where differences are acknowledged and respected, voices are heard, and everyone feels safe, valued, and heard. Every student needs to experience recognition and understanding and respect in our educational institutions regardless of their personal background, ability, identity, or financial status. The implementation of those principles in schools establishes educational spaces which enable all students to succeed both academically, socially, and emotionally. I'm trying to beat the clock. The educational preparation of students for future success includes their readiness to enter a world and workforce that continues to grow more diverse and interconnected. Our district's continued support for these initiatives serves to elevate marginalized voices while developing essential skills of empathy, critical thinking, and collaboration. This is not about politics, as some would like to make it, it's about preparing students to be respectful, informed, and engaged citizens in a diverse society. Did I do it?
Thank you. Angela?
Administration also has to lead by example. Everyone must be treated with the same respect regardless of the position that they hold. We need to hold workshops for teachers and staff, Board of Education members, students, et cetera, so that everyone is on the same page, working together. We need unity in solutions, not just thoughts. We need to follow through and make it happen for everyone in our community, and that includes everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. The best approach begins with listening and data, not assumptions. We should regularly gather input from students, families, and staff, then use that feedback to guide measurable changes in policies and resources. Equity isn't just about cultural inclusion, it's also about access. Add advanced coursework, extracurriculars, special education services, and enrichment programs must equally, must be equally reachable for all. This means removing barriers tied to language or disability and proactively inviting family participation. Teachers and staff should have continuous training and be able to model how to respect one another from kindergarten to senior year. When respect and representation become everyday practice, students thrive as themselves and learn to value others. Thank you.
Thank you. Question nine. What is your vision for extracurricular and enrichment opportunities in our school? Salvatore?
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, we have to continue offering career and technical education courses that not only provide certification, but they provide real-world experience to students that are going into the trade-bound, career-bound, and those that are going in the college-bound. We have to have more advanced placement classes and the exams, because I don't think a lot of students notice, but you don't have to take the class, you just have to take the exam, so we have to be giving more attention to that so that these students can take it and then they could, because right now, the program with the dual enrollment with the associate's degree, only a few students can get into that, so we have to make it more straightforward about how to get these credits. I've tried bringing that up in the past years. Some teachers have helped me do that at the high school level, so I'm happy I was able to do that, but everyone that graduates to high school either has to be going straight to college in the field they have to go to, they can't be undecided, or they have to be going into a trade or career path, and they have to be ready to go and have the confidence. They can't be wasting time and money going into something that they're not sure of. They have to have the preparedness necessary to go forward. So that's how, and not only that, we also have a very robust theater program, those kids are very talented, so there's a path for everyone, whether it's the arts or the sciences, anything like that. So that's what we have to continue doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mairei?
I believe that education doesn't stop at the classroom door. Extra activities and programs are essential to helping students discover their passions, build confidence, help in creating well-rounded school environments, and develop life skills that prepare them for their future. Sorry, I always think people can't hear me. My vision is to ensure that every student, regardless of the ability, background, has access diverse, high-quality opportunities in the arts, music, athletic, electives, vocational, leadership, and life skill services. These programs should be inclusive, engaging, responsive to student interests. I'll advocate for expanding offerings during and beyond the school day, including clubs, competitions, mentorships, and dual enrollment options like those that we currently have. I'll also push for removing barriers to participation, whether it's the transportation that got cut, the fees, or scheduling conflicts, so no child is left due to any circumstances. I would also ask to bring back to the table the creation of the All-Inclusive Park for our children, the students. Extra activities enrich student with disabilities by fostering social connections, building confidence, and supporting emotional behavior growth. With that right accommodation, these programs can offer inclusive spaces for our students and beyond the classroom. In past research, it does show that extra activity involvement boosts the academic performance of students, their attendance, and well, their emotional well-being. These programs aren't extra, they're essentials, and I want our schools to be places where the students are connected, inspired, and empowered, and together, we can offer that. It shouldn't just be a promise, it should be given to every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
My experience as a special education teacher has taught me that inclusion isn't just about access, it's about belonging. Every student, regardless of ability or social challenge, should have the opportunity to experience a full, well-rounded education, and this isn't always the case. That includes academics, the arts, athletics, and extracurricular activities. We have some great CTE courses, and we have, of course, courses for students who are college-bound, but not every student is college-bound, so I think that adding CTE courses for students would also be something worth pursuing. We already have some wonderful clubs and programs in place, and we should continue to hold club fairs like we do now, and encourage students to help us create new opportunities that reflect their interests, which are always evolving. While participation may look different for each student, every student who wants to be involved should be encouraged and supported to do so. As a board member, I'll continue to advocate for programs and policies that make that possible, ensuring that every child feels included, valued, and empowered to succeed.
Thank you. Angela?
All opportunities are for all, not just for a select few. Hold the student activities fair annually for all students, all schools. Ask the students their ideas and what they would like out of their education to be well-rounded for their future. I would like to see this happen, I would like to push for this to happen. I think it's important that we get the students' ideas and we listen to everything they have to say, not just assume. We need to hear their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Just making sure I didn't lose my spot. Okay. My vision is that every student can find something that lights them up. Every student, regardless of background, ability, or income, deserves the opportunity to explore their interests, build confidence, and develop leadership through enrichment experiences. This means ensuring we offer a balanced mix of academic clubs, arts, athletics, STEM, and community service programs. Extracurriculars build confidence, teamwork, and leadership. We should ensure all programs are accessible and supported and partner with local businesses or colleges to expand opportunities. We should be arming families with information about choices for charter schools, college advisories, and offer programs that are designed to invite and inspire participation. When students discover their passions, they stay engaged, and that engagement fuels academic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you. I love that we're a district that the students can come up with activities, clubs, or sports, and the building and the district administration will listen and look into a way to make it happen. We've had a few obstacles, busing, you know, yes, we did bring it back one day, but I know that's an obstacle for some of our students. And then, another one is for our differently-abled students challenging finding staff members willing, being able to stay after to make those sports and activities inclusive. Moving forward, that's an ongoing discussion on both ends, and, you know, working ways to see how to overcome them. Elementary has started with a K-Kids program, you know, in quite a few of our districts. Those have evolved, but I'd like to see more opportunities that, where students can participate. It's a conversation, it's not a directive. Mr. Domeno has been very forward-thinking of sports that are coming up or that kids are looking into, and Mr. Cede Adino talked about last year of an inclusive field, you know, building that on school grounds. So again, these are just conversations that have started and continue to be ongoing. You know, with the busing and things, could any of our clubs or activities, could those conversations be moved to teams? The kids all have teams, you know, how can we meet the kids where they are while still maintaining the financial responsibility that we have to our budget?
Thank you. Question ten, last one. If elected, what will be your top priority in your first year of service? Mairei?
If elected to the OBBOE, my top priority in the first year will be restoring focus and integrity to our BOE's district decision-making. Every action taken by the BOE must reflect the needs of the students, educators, and families, not the personal politic agendas. Just as important, I will immediately seek collaboration with the township council to address the funding inadequacy caused by these outdated property assessments. Our town's growth, especially through the overdevelopment, has brought in more families, more children, and increased land value. Yet, our assessments haven't kept pace, and the state's funding formula assumes we can cover most of these costs. The reality is, we all know, we can't. We need a unified front to advocate for fair assessments and responsible development planning. Our schools must not be left behind while the town expands. This includes addressing the impact of the pilot programs, which often reduce the tax base for schools by keeping out the new development and warehouses from contributing to the schools. These agreements can cause an affected district, which it has for ours for the last seven years, and these are all tied to an equalized assessed property of ours. So I'd prioritize also curriculum integrity and equity, ensuring every student has access to the high-quality, inclusive learning experiences, and that the core programs that were on the table last year, like kindergarten, arts, athletics, are kept on the table, and that we identify any efficiencies in the non-instructural areas to preserve the educational quality. I am ready to serve with compassion, discipline, and a deep commitment to the future of Old Bridge, ensuring our schools are not only well-funded, but also safe, inclusive, and responsive to the needs of all our learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Well, my top priority would be, in my fourth year of service, budget, budget, budget. Stabilizing it, advocating for a fair funding formula, working with demographers to identify areas for savings. We only have a few months left remaining until the next budget cycle review, so we have, the Long Range Planning Committee and Finance Committee are gonna start looking at that soon. We need to seek substantive ways to address fiscal challenges. We need to look for ways to be transparent about strategies under consideration for significant savings. We have to review and improve utilization of existing programs and look into combining resources between schools. Utilizing the demographer information regarding redistrict of schools, streamlining resources, and looking at long-range planning and fiscal responsibility to minimize the burden of taxpayers. We also, another priority of mine would be creating more inclusive opportunities for all students so that all students of all abilities have the same high-quality educational experience, including academic, social, emotional, and career-oriented opportunities in Old Bridge schools.
Thank you. Angela?
Once again, I'm gonna bring up accountability, hold people accountable, and fiscal responsibility. Don't spend what you don't have, so do more with less. Have administration apply for all grants possible to ease the tax burden on our taxpayers, but at the same time, make sure that nothing, and I mean nothing, is taken away from the students, only added. That's what I feel about this town. Like I said, I've been in this town for my whole life, pretty much, and I want to see the future be better for everyone, especially the students. They're the ones that are going to be in charge in the future, and they deserve to have everything and every opportunity that we could possibly give them in the town of Old Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Thank you. My first priority is listening, really listening to our staff, administrators, and families. I want to understand their needs directly, not filtered through reports. Direct communication is my priority with stakeholders, and I don't want to take admin's word for happy employees. I want to get to know the needs and the dreams of employees directly. Then I'll focus on transparency and community involvement, making sure more families know about and attend committee meetings, which to me are so informative yet informal. That's where trust is built, and I'll dig into the budget right away to identify where we can save, strengthen, or rethink spending. A good board member connects people, not just policies. These are my thoughts to bring together faculty, not just educators, by the way, and with the community. And before I wrap up, I do want to just wish everybody the best on this panel. This is six of us volunteering out of the entire district, out of the entire town. We're giving up our time, we're volunteering our time, and, you know, so kudos, I think, to all of us on this panel. And I really want to thank the PTA President's Council for making this fair and respectful and offering this opportunity to our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Past two years, the project that I've been very passionate about has been trying to get to working together with the town and strengthening that collaboration. As I've said before, we are all representing the same people, one community. So I'd like to strengthen that. We were able to have two meetings this year, I want, would like to keep those more often and more information coming through them, so that would be a big part of if I was reelected. And then the long-term strategic planning, you know, is a big focus. What's the district gonna do? We have aging buildings, we have, you know, more people moving in, the redistricting is the big focus, you know, this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Salvatore?
Yes, so twenty twenty-six, there's a lot of opportunities for the town to get involved with the redistricting of the district. Where, like I said, October fifteenth, we're gonna have our long-range strategic planning meeting, and Parash Samjin is gonna go over a lot of those ideas. and Parat Samjin is gonna go over a lot of those ideas and a lot of that. And I would also continue the transparent communication with residents as I've done for the last six years. It's very important because a lot of people, not saying people on this board, but a lot of politicians, they just, they do the photo ops and they just go out for show, but they don't communicate well. I feel like I've communicated very well with the residents, so I'd like to continue that. And of course, I would also set a great and stable relationship with the permanent superintendent that we choose and the district. It's very important to continue the tradition of sustained parent and student involvement with their schools and their superintendent. So, that's what we're trying to replace, and we're trying to go forward. And inevitably, I know this is probably gonna end up on Facebook, and so please, if you have any questions, you have to email me directly at sgordano@obps.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to take this opportunity to thank each Board of Education candidate for being here tonight. We truly appreciate your time and dedication to the children of Old Bridge, and we wish you all the best of luck in the upcoming election. A special thank you to Mr. Gajuski and the Old Bridge High School TV crew for their support this evening. Thank you, guys. We also we also thank the Old Bridge Education Association for providing refreshments and the Candidate Night Committee for their help in organizing this event. Thank you to everyone who joins us tonight. We hope this program has helped you make an informed decision ahead of Election Day. Please remember to vote by mail and ballot, early voting, or in-person at your polling place on Tuesday, November 4th. Have a great evening.